Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Londonderry Town Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You can please remain standing. Country's gone through a lot lately. Lot of fatalities due to weather down in the Carolinas and that region, and a lot of families are grieving because of that. So I'd like to just take this time to please have a moment of silence, remember those loved ones, and provide support to those who need it.
Could we please add in that it's the one-year anniversary of the October 7th attacks in the Middle East and pray for all those people on both sides?
Most definitely. Thank you. Please be seated. All right, so I'll accept a motion. We'll need to do a roll call vote. I'll accept the motion to enter in a non-public session according to RSA 91A colon 3, 2, A and B. Thank you. D?
So moved. Second.
All right, I have a motion from Ted, second from Ron. Roll call vote.
I take homes.
I, Chad Franz.
I, Ron Dunn.
I, John Farrell.
All right, folks. We'll be back. We're gonna enter in non-public.
So moved.
Second.
Do a roll call vote.
I take homes.
I, Chad Franz.
I, Ron Dunn.
I, John Farrell.
I will make a motion to seal the minutes for no less than two weeks in the non-public.
Only for that one section, though, right?
For A or D?
For D, sorry.
So you have a motion to seal the minutes for, under RSA 91A colon 3, Section 2, D only, for no less than two weeks?
Yes.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Ron. All in favor. Roll call vote for that?
Roll call vote.
I take homes.
I, Chad Franz.
I, Ron Dunn.
I, John Farrell.
All right, folks. We are in public comment. They've been asked that Dave come forward, please. Mr. Wally, good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Dave Wally. I proudly serve as your town's Public Works Director, but tonight I come before you as a caring member and resident of the town of Londonderry to inform this board and the viewing audience, members in the room in the community of Londonderry of an important Halloween fundraiser being conducted by the American Legion Post 27 on October 26th, starting at 5:00 PM, on behalf of a wonderful and valued Londonderry resident, Rob Galan and his wife, Janine. I'm joined tonight with some of our closest friends, and I'm sure Rob is comfortably beside his caring wife at home tuning in right now. And Rob, I apologize if I'm gonna be long-winded, because I know you're a Yankees fan. Don't hold that against them, but they're coming up soon. But pay attention, Rob, because this is for you. Mr. Rogers once said, "Taking care is one way to show your love. Another way is letting people take good care of you when you need it." And therefore, we know that in this beautiful and caring town, we all understand you would want to be informed when one of our own are so courageously facing a dire challenge. You see, two years ago, this month, our great friend, Rob, was diagnosed with glioblastoma, otherwise known as GBM, which is stage IV brain cancer. It is extremely important to Rob to bring awareness to this cruel and incurable disease. Some famous people who have been taken from this horrible disease are Tim Wakefield, Kent Kennedy, John McCain, and even our president, Joe Biden's son, Beau. But around here in Londonderry, our famous friend is Rob Galan. For those of you who may not have had the pleasure to meet Rob, let me tell you a little bit about him. Rob settled in town in 2001 and raised three of the best Lancers to graduate from Londonderry High School you've ever known, his daughter Miranda and two sons, Aiden and Brandon. Miranda graduated from Fairfield University in 2023 and now works in finance for Dell Computers. Aiden is a biology major attending Keene State University, and Brandon is at Sacred Heart University studying business. Rob got engaged to his lovely wife, Janine, in August of 2022 after meeting while she was moving back through her hometown of Londonderry in 2016. That's right, Janine herself is a proud Londonderry Lancer as well. Sadly, the joy of their engagement was short-lived when the diagnosis came a short two months later, and an expedited official marriage ceremony was held in New York City's Central Park in December of 2022. However, as dreadful the news was, Rob was determined to push back on what was to come and move forward with planning the destination wedding they had always dreamed of. Family and friends from everywhere flew in to share and embrace them in their celebration of marriage at the beautiful Hyatt Ziva Cap Cana Resort in Punta Cana one year later. The value of Rob and our community is unmatched by many. His resume of volunteering is impressive, to say the least, and even to this very moment, he remains a member-at-large on some boards and continues to engage as best he can wherever there are people trying to make a difference in our beloved town. Over the past 15-plus years, Rob has served on the boards for LAFA, the LBC, SAL, Dugout Club, Lancers on Deck Club, and for the New England Fusion Softball, rising to the ranks of president, vice president, secretary, historian, webmaster, and many more. His efforts have helped support the development of youth sports, raise money for the unfortunate, award dozens of scholarships, and support our precious veterans. In 2016, he ventured into live streaming youth sports games by starting up JPR Live with two other dads here in town. Rob noticed there was a strong desire to watch games that busy parents or relatives couldn't attend, and thus, a massive sports media giant was born. Yes, Rob, put me up to saying that. But perhaps his creation was never more important than when COVID hit and seating was limited or restricted at these events. It has also been a valuable tool for young athletes to utilize and be able to market themselves for recruiting efforts for colleges all over New England and beyond. Other notable community involvement that Rob has partaken in was driving pageant winners for the old Home Day parades when they needed a convertible and had even submitted to run for Budget Committee before having to withdraw when the diagnosis came. Like I stated in the beginning, Rob is very passionate in spreading awareness for this cruel and incurable disease, and even has dreams of turning his story into a screenplay as he started writing it before the lengthy hospital stays started to mount up. So what is GBM glioblastoma? Again, it is an incurable stage IV brain cancer that has seen treatments come a long way but have had no significant advancements in the treatment for almost 20 years now. Remission is not an option, as the cells always live within your brain and will eventually return. GBM is one of the most deadly and aggressive forms of cancer and considered the worst diagnosis due to the location, knowing that the brain controls everything for your body. Therefore, the quality of life is significantly impacted beyond a typical illness. Most frustrating about the disease is that doctors and scientists cannot figure out how to get drugs powerful enough to infiltrate and kill the tumor past the blood-brain barrier, and each tumor is different with various markers and genetic makeup. Since October 19th, 2022, Rob has battled through three craniognomies and eight surgeries related to the diagnosis spanning over two years, and even this summer alone spent more than 40 days in the hospital on six different stays. The doctors have informed him he will no longer be eligible for another craniotomy. It will simply be too severe. Being the incredible volunteer that he is, he opted into two different risky clinical trials to help the doctors and scientists from all over the globe gain a better understanding working on this dreaded disease and push the limits of experimental treatments. He is currently dealing with many micro seizures and has complete loss of vision to his left eye due to the surgeries. He has limited mobility on his left side of his body and many cognitive issues with focusing, processing, and overstimulation, all the while pushing back on exhaustion and severe fatigue. Survival rates for GBM are discouraging. Only 25% of patients make it to 12 to 18 months, and only 5% make it to more than five years. All the while, Rob has remarkably remained positive and been the strength for his friends and family when they all wanted to fall apart. Rob has always said he will be the guy to beat every statistic and be a doctor's success story, and we that know him well have no doubt that he will die trying to accomplish this task. So, Rob, you have been taking care of many in this town with love, and now is the time for letting people take good care of you when you need it. As we approach Rob's two-year anniversary of coping with GBM and with odds being against him, his loving wife, Janine, his children, family, and all that support him of this important matter to help Rob in this arduous journey. Again, doors open on October 26th at 5:00 PM at the American Legion, right here at Six Agent Road behind the central fire station. It is a Halloween event, so you can wear a costume if you like, but absolutely not necessary. It's $25 per person at the door. There will be lots of fun, laughter, dancing. The popular cover band Bazooka Joe will be performing live music. There will be 50/50 raffles, basket raffles, and these t-shirts that you see us wearing here tonight for sale as well. Best costume prizes will be awarded, light snacks, desserts, and refreshments will also be provided. For those of you that cannot attend but would like to donate to this most worthy fundraising cause, you can Venmo our account at SALPOST27. That's S-A-L-P-O-S-T-2-7. All donations and proceeds are going straight to the Galan family to help them recover medical costs and much-needed equipment to make modifications at their home in hopes of making the daily routines a bit easier for Rob and Janine. Respectfully, I thank you for your time and attention to this important matter happening to our dearest friend, Rob, a huge community leader and volunteer within the community of Londonderry. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Our thoughts and prayers are with Rob and family, and thank you very much for everything that you are doing as a friend. And thank you. All right, just to remind everyone, that's @SAL, S-A-L POST 27 is the Venmo. We're gonna move things around a little bit. Chief Bernard, you ready to present your new officers and promotions, sir?
Town leadership, good evening. Mr. Malaguti, I'd like to introduce you, excuse me for a second. You guys wanna come on up? I'd like to introduce you some new members of the Police Department. I'm gonna give you a quick rundown of each one of them. To my left is Eric Burke. Eric is a certified police officer, having served just over four years at a seacoast law enforcement agency. Eric also was an avid hockey player, still plays, but we're gonna try to get him to cut back on that. We don't need injuries, so we're gonna ask him to step away from that.
He's fast. He won't get caught.
Well, we all get caught. Eric is also a member of the SWAT team where he came from. Eric was chosen through a lengthy hiring process of some very qualified individuals. As I've mentioned to the staff before, we try to only hire what we believe is the Londonderry reputation, the Londonderry best, and the men and women that you see standing before you are just that. Every time I come here and introduce a certified officer, I like to remind you, folks, that the biggest draw for certified officers is the reputation. The biggest draw is the morale of the Police Department. That is one of the things that we often hear. Why do you want to come here? It's the culture that we embody, that we embrace, and that we mentor the new officers to become, and that obviously is the biggest recruiting tool that we have. Recently, I was talking with the command staff, the captains and the deputy chief, and I was saying how I saw that article, as we all did, on MUR about police departments suffering from devastating numbers and decline. And often, when I'm at chief meetings, including Rockingham County, chiefs always ask me, they say, "Hey, Kim, how are you guys doing over there?" And I'm always embarrassed to answer it, and I tell them, "We're perfect. We really are. We're perfect in the sense that other agencies are down 10, 22, 64 people," as you can see through State Police Manchester and Nashua. So what I always tell people when they ask us, is what I said to the command staff, is, "What do we need to do different? What do we need to do? Should we try a different hiring technique? Do we need to put some flashy video out there? What do we do?" And we thought about it, and then after we got back from lunch, I said to Jason and Tim sitting over there, "I don't think we need to do anything, because whatever we're doing is working, so we're not gonna change it." So before you hear is Eric Burke. He's in his FTO period, is doing his two-week in-house training, so hopefully you guys will see him on the road in a good way, not being stopped or something, but you'll see him out there interacting with the community. So this is Eric Burke. The next lady we're gonna introduce is Brittany Wrights. Now, Brittany should be no stranger to you guys, because we hired her three years ago. Fun fact about Brittany, she was hired three years ago, but now Brittany has been promoted to the rank of detective. Now, fun fact again, we stood before you folks maybe six, eight months back about that COSAP grant where we were approached by the state about this funding opportunity to create an opioid position within our agency. As I stood there, I spoke to you folks about it back then. We talked about, is there a need? What do we do with this position? We had lengthy discussions and meetings with the command staff, and I'm gonna reiterate what I said to you guys back then, that it's to promote alcohol, drug-free lifestyles, build community structure, and support those lifestyles, encourage people to get help, its support, its coordinated, systematic approach, its preventative law enforcement, going to help enforce and treatment of substance misuse, to collaborate with outside organizations, those within the community, to help people in times of need when they struggle. Brittany has a demeanor and a personality about her that's calming, it's welcoming, and the prior history and job knowledge she had, she was a social worker. She did work with people when she worked for Manchester PD at the time, doing similar job functions. So the command staff interviewed four potential candidates for this detective assignment, and it was unanimous that Brittany's experience, her dedication, and the way she conducts herself is exactly what this position needs. So we challenged her that this position is going to be hard. We've never had one, so we encouraged her to hit the ground running, and whatever resources she needs, she knows that she has the support from us, from the town council, and from the town manager's office, that this is something in much need for the town. So we look forward to her. She started that role today. So again, Detective Brittany Wrights. All right, so last year during the budget process, I came to you folks for a need. I said to you, "I only come for needs. I don't come for wants." I came to you because we had lost, as you guys remember, the county attorney's office took away the felonies-first program, and the amount of work that we were putting on our legal team was mounting. And so with the support of the town council, town manager, the finance office, and the voters, we're able to get the new paralegal position approved. So standing before you folks today is Catherine Carlson. Catherine was a graduate of Pinkerton Academy. Catherine attended and graduated Penn State University, Maske School of Law, and Catherine was also serving in a prosecutor capacity for the county attorney's office. Catherine's been with us just over a month now, I believe, so she's gonna help us round out our legal team and give Attorney Flynn much-needed help. So, folks, this is Catherine Carlson. Last and not least, as the saying goes, our newest paralegal. So this is Kara Whitman. Kara comes to us with 14 years of criminal law experience and family matters. Kara's come from a busy, fast-paced law firm in Nashua. She was selected to be the addition to the Services Division, or the Legal Bureau, if you would. So Catherine now will be working alongside with Prosecutor Flynn, Kara Whitman, Captain Morrison, and Sergeant Bueker. So another great addition. A little fun fact, I don't like to put people on the spot, but Kara had opportunities out there that most people would have taken in a moment's notice. I don't want to speak for you. We'll leave the other place out of it, but after she had visited our facility, after she had spent some time with us, it became clear to her, if you don't mind me saying it that way, it was a different environment and a different atmosphere than the other place that she had looked at. So this reassures, and I hope you guys hear it and see what I'm telling you here, is that we are doing something right, and we're able to get good candidates. So PD is alive and well. We are all good. I want to thank you all for taking the moment to let me introduce you to the newest members of your Londonderry Police Department.
Congratulations. Welcome.
Hello.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
It's well-earned.
Nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Do a photo?
Oh, yeah.
Let me follow a few folks real quick.
Want to jump in there, too?
Sure.
Kara out of place, gee.
Hi, Dan.
That's good.
All right, folks. We are moving along the agenda. Chief Butler, command update, sir.
Firefighter Fowler, Lieutenant Jastrum.
Thank you, leadership. Bo Butler, Fire Chief, Town of Londonderry. We have at Londonderry Fire about $16 million of rolling fleet or rolling apparatus. It's a huge investment from the community that they entrust us with. It allows us to get from point A to point B, and we couldn't do our mission without the fire apparatus that the taxpayers provide us. It's an aging fleet. We're doing some things to change that. As you know, last year, we got approval for two new fire engines, which are a couple of years away. But before me is firefighter Fowler and retired lieutenant Gene Jastrum. Brian is our mechanic for the Londonderry Fire Department. He is also the owner and operator of Rockingham Truck out of Derry, New Hampshire, a certified mechanic, diesel mechanic. As our mechanic with, as I mentioned, $16 million of rolling fleet, you know, and the taxpayers know, that labor rates are through the roof and only going up. Brian, as our mechanic, gets paid a stipend through the contract with 3160 to provide his expertise as a subject matter expert to fix our apparatus in critical situations and to maintain our apparatus. He saves the town of Londonderry a ton of money, often coming in off hours with his own equipment and his mobile vehicle to come to the fire department or the side of the road off-duty to fix the apparatus, get it back in service, and in doing so, saves the community a lot, a lot of money. So I wanted to recognize Brian tonight in front of you to just bring to your awareness that there are people within our own house that we use to help our house, and I think that's very, very important. So firefighter Brian Fowler. The next gentleman is retired Londonderry Fire Lieutenant Gene Jastrum. The reason why I'm also recognizing Lieutenant Jastrum, although retired member, is that he still works, still works, for WD Perkins, which services our fire pumps. Again, a subject matter expert, because of his relationship and the 30-plus years he gave the town of Londonderry, when we need Lieutenant Jastrum services through WD Perkins, when we need Lieutenant Jastrum services, he prioritizes the town of Londonderry over the other obligations. So again, the town, the fire department benefits from Lieutenant Jastrum and firefighter Fowler. So on behalf of me and the fire department and the community, I would like to thank you for it is what you do, and please continue to do it. It means the world to us. Thank you.
Way to go, Gina.
Next order of business. Chief Bernard, would you please post in front of me? Right here, brother. I don't know what to say, so I'm just gonna say the thing that always seems to shine through the greatest, which is a position of truth, and I know that it will help guide me. I'm in an untenable situation as the fire chief, and perhaps my fatal flaw in this position is I love my hometown, and I love the people that I serve, both within my house and the taxpayers and the residents. As of late, I have been in a lot of pain, and pain, in my estimation, is just one of the strongest things a human being can experience, because you can't will it away and you can't wish it away. But the pain that I'm experiencing is a moral and ethical dilemma of the first order. As fire chief, I have two obligations. The first obligation is to balance the budget that the taxpayers provide me. The second obligation is to protect the people that provide that service to the community that expects that service. I come to you with a full heart, with no malice and no ill will. I have to make a decision to cut services. Last March, the taxpayers approved 13 firefighters across the four fire battalions at 70% of the vote. And to quote a mentor of mine, Tony DeFrancesco, "That is a report card to determine how a fire department or town is doing," and the community turned out, because they listened. They wanted 13. Because the way my budget is trending right now, given circumstances that are outside of my control, I'm flying through those monies appropriated by the taxpayers. So I've come to an inflection point. I have a decision to make. The decision is to cut services from 13, 12, down to 11, although the community told me they want 13, or not execute what I have to do as a fire chief because of my budget obligations. 10 times out of 10, the man standing in front of you will always prioritize people and health and safety in my role as chief of the department, my people and we, the people, over any type of monetary value. Period. End of story. So then I'm forced to make a decision whether I acquiesce or capitulate to what I believe in my heart is the best thing for this community, and in doing so, will put the council and my boss, town manager Mike Malaguti, in a position, if I go over budget, where another hard decision has to be made. There are things worth fighting for still in this country, for sure, that I believe in with all my heart and all my soul, which allows me to execute the way I'm going to execute in this instance. I stood before you on September 11th, 2023, and I told you that firefighters would always come first. Firefighters' first mission always is what I said, and I meant that. When my firefighters are taken care of and when they're staffed at the level the community told me they wanted to be staffed at, and I can't do that for the firefighters in the community, that's a problem for me. So it's not that I can't give the order to drop services, but I won't give the order. but I won't give the order because I love these people, because I know their families and their wives and their husbands and their children. Intimately, we are involved with each other's lives, which is hard for someone that doesn't understand the fire service to truly realize how important these people behind me are to me. And I am not going to be the chief to violate my own character and my own integrity and my own principle to come in under budget at the cost of their health and safety, first and foremost. And any chief that thinks otherwise needs to realign his priorities. Just bear with me. So I am providing you my resignation tonight as chief of the Londonary Fire Department. Because on the day of my judgment, when I stand before my God and the life that I've lived previously and the things that I have done to his world, when I ask to be led into his kingdom, he's gonna ask me, "Son, did you do everything you could when you were the fire chief to protect your people so they could go home to their families and live a productive life?" I need to be able to tell him yes. The lesson here is for my children because they're watching me. And what I say to my kids is that there are things worth standing up against and for. And if you believe in your heart that you're right, there is nothing that can convince you otherwise. You understand me, girls? I know the natural reaction right now is anger. I know that. That's the natural reaction right now. You guys are angry. But what I ask you is to maintain composure, execute smartly, love each other harder. The community will rise to the occasion. But it takes this sacrifice to get there. It will. I know my hometown. You will get the money you need to carry out your mission, to be safe so that you can provide the service to the people that are counting on you. And then give you every tool you can to get back home to your loved ones in one piece. I'm sorry. But I hope if you don't agree with me, you at least understand that I am not going to acquiesce or compromise or capitulate my internal belief to do what is right, given the parameters that I'm faced with. I've always been a principled person. And because of my principles, it's been very easy for me to take care of people. But there's a third P that has introduced itself into my life, as I told my boss and the chairman today, and it's politics. And I can't, I can't navigate politics. I am inhibited from doing that because of what's on the line. I've been leaving my wife since I was 18 years old, land far, far away, a long time ago. And I'm looking forward to going home to her. And we're gonna shut the gate at the farm because I have everything I need at the top of that hill. And I'm gonna live the rest of my life in peace. And we'll always know that when push came to shove, Bo Butler stood for what is right and what is true. And so long as I tell the truth, how I feel, to combat how I'm feeling with truth and love, I'll be good to go. I ask you to fully consider this budget season as we start off and give the fire department what it needs to give it back to the community what they asked for. 110% of 110% of the time, 13. It's been the honor of my life. I'm grateful for you, boss. Thank you for your trust. Thank you for your support. I'm sorry that I cannot do this for you. John, I love you. This has been hard for me, so I've been avoiding you like the plague because if there's someone that's gonna talk me out of it, it's you. And I'm not gonna put you in that position either.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. We are in public comment. I've asked Vice Chair Combs to read through the public comment procedures, please.
Yes, so just a reminder for anyone. We have our model for rules and procedures for public comment. There shall be a timeline for each individual speaker of five minutes. Speakers are not limited to donate their time to other speakers. During public hearings, speakers are required to limit their comments to the topic which is before the council or before and which is the subject of the hearing. During public comments, speakers are required to limit their comments to matters of public concern relating to town governance. Place one on the agenda. Individuals or groups wishing to speak at a regular council or board meeting at a time other than a public hearing shall submit written requests to the town management board as well as the administrative assistant. The chair of the council or board retains the discretion to allow or deny permission on the agenda. The following conduct is not, is, my apologies, is prohibited. Using profanity or vulgar language, using language which is likely to lead to disturbance or disorder because it insults or demeans any person or which, when direct at a public official or employee, is not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of public figures. Interrupting other speakers or engaging in public, and my apologies, in behavior that disrupts the meeting, including but not limited to applause, cheers, et cetera, engaging in behavior that threatens or intimidates others or addresses the council or board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, and affairs of the town.
Thank you.
And again, we are open to public comment.
So, real quick. There are comments I ask you direct them to the chair.
I am gonna direct it to the chair. I came tonight not knowing this was gonna happen because I wanted to ask that the council and the town manager.
Name and address, please.
Daniel Bouchard, 8 O'Connell Drive, Londonary, New Hampshire. Because I wanted to ask that you give us an update as to how many vacant positions that we've run throughout the year. And the reason I did that was because, and this is not on Chief Bernard, this is on this previous chief, all right, that would run all these vacant positions just to balance the budget. And what I saw tonight, well, first of all, I saw last weekend, last week at the meeting. I was very proud of Chief Butler because he's out there hiring local people, people that live in town, that grew up in town, all right? And I look behind me, these ladies and gentlemen support this man. I cannot believe that you did not deny that resignation and support the fire chief. Okay? You have a...
Is there a motion to accept his resignation?
I don't know, John. This is my time. This is my time, John.
Because they're doing well, Ben and I.
This is, this is my time, okay?
I'm sorry. I was thinking, I wanted to make sure there wasn't one.
All right. Because if I look back and I saw that Chief Butler grow up as a young man, saw him in schools and stuff, and I see the support that he has here. We've had other department heads, all right, that you've brought, that, not you guys, all right, that the town has brought in, all right, that their rank and file couldn't, didn't support him, all right? We had a fire chief before this, all right, that you brought in from out of town, all right, that didn't have the support that you have here tonight, okay? Yes, we want the protection. We wanted the 13 on staff. I'm an elderly person. I have a community that have a lot of elderly people, okay? We have a lot of elderly people in the community. Last week, when I heard you, Chairman France, talk about this hospital, and I was like, "Yeah, he's right, okay? It's gonna draw on our services, okay? The last thing I want to see as a taxpayer, these gentlemen, these ladies, endangered and end up, one of them dying and we end up at Peabody's, okay? He, we had a surplus last year in the budget, didn't we? I don't see what the issue is, okay? He's giving us what we want, the coverage, all right? And I think you need to consider that. As a taxpayer, and when you say 70% of the people voted for this, they're telling you something. And if you let this man walk away, you're making the biggest mistake, biggest mistake that you can ever make on that council, all right? I don't think, to me, I look at this as another Laurie Gandia situation, all right? Because when Laurie Gandia had the whole situation, have we filled that position? No, people don't want to come here because of the situation, all right? We gonna have the same problem with a fire chief? Nobody's gonna want to be a fire chief because of this? No. Gentlemen, you need to really think this over. You need to step up, okay? The last word is with you people. You're his boss. I've had differences with Mike. I don't know what happened here, but it's not good to lose Bo Butler as a chief. And please, don't let him walk away.
Let the record reflect that the council has not voted to accept a resignation at all. Gentlemen, name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Brian Young. I'm the vice president of Local 3160. I live at 14 Fieldstone Drive. Beside me is Brian Schofield, treasurer, Local 3160, resident at 18 King John Drive. So tonight, I come to address you as the council, the chair of the council, and the citizens of Londonary. We're coming to express our strong support on behalf of Local 3160 for Chief Butler and the incredible work that he has done for the Londonary Fire Rescue Department and our community as a whole. Chief Butler's leadership has been instrumental in fostering a culture of professionalism, accountability, and progress within our department. His commitment to improving the safety and well-being of both the community and the firefighters under his command is evident in every decision he makes. Chief Butler consistently advocates for the resources and training needed to ensure that Londonary Fire Rescue operates at the highest level of efficiency and readiness. Moreover, Chief Butler's transparent and collaborative approach has strengthened the relationship between our department and the town of Londonary. His dedication to open communication and teamwork has cultivated a working environment that encourages growth and development for all members of the fire service, from new recruits to experienced firefighters. As members of Local 3160, we believe that stability and success of our department are directly linked to the strength of our leadership. Chief Butler has proven time and again that he is a leader who not only prioritizes the safety of our town, but also the welfare and growth of his personnel. His continued service is vital to the future of Londonary Fire Rescue, and we wholeheartedly support him in his role. Sincerely, the members of Local 3160.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Gene Jastrum, 19 Horseshoe Lane. This stuff's gotta stop. This budget stuff's gotta stop. I don't know exactly what happened here. I can only tell you my 35 years being on this department. Same issues. It's funding. It's always funding. It's never the overtime has been filled exactly the way it needed to be, with one exception. It was when COVID came in. The fire chief back then recommended the amount of people that need to be on duty, and the council back then agreed to it. So you know an exact figure of how much it takes to run this department every year. The problem is, there's nothing set aside when somebody gets hurt and now you have to pay somebody time and a half to fill that position. The funds start drawing down. Now, I don't know exactly where the funds are right now in the department because I'm no longer in there. But being a taxpayer that backed these guys up and went after that Warren article and passed it, and I had reservation about this because I knew this was gonna end up happening because it's happened every year that I've been there. You get to a certain point, January, February, and all of a sudden, we gotta start dropping down. We gotta drop back. And we drop back because we have less funds. And I understand that. But the problem here is the council, year after year, sends a budget to the taxpayers below default because you want to keep the taxes low. I understand that. But that comes at a cost. Comes at a cost that these people, whether it's the fire department, police department, DPW, they have service contracts. They can't maintain that stuff. They have to start dropping that. They have to start dropping other stuff to try to maintain their staffing. And it's a false sense of security. If you guys bring a budget to the taxpayers and say, "This is what it's gonna take to run." And then we turn around and get a Warren article in front of us and make a decision, "Okay, this is the manpower, what it's gonna take to run." So the question is, who's at fault here? Was this funded right to begin with? Is it the town manager? Is it finance? Or is it ultimately the chair? Because you're responsible for this town. And I'd like to know the answer.
I'll give you the answer. So I've served this town for 25 years, as you've known.
Yes.
I'd served as the chairman of the town council for 10. And this is my 15th year. I came close to resigning this afternoon because for the last 25 years, I've done nothing but try to do and protect this town. When I joined this council, we had eight firefighters on a shift. So for the last 15 years, I've fought to bring the police and the firefighters up.
That's not a question.
I'm not saying that. We changed the form of government here to SB2. It stinks. It's a terrible law. If we were in town meeting, we could do the things you said we could do. If we changed the charter and got rid of SB2, and I'm all for opening up the charter, we could go back to actually budgeting correctly and not work within this stupid law that we have to abide by by the state. I hate it. Here's the simple deal for me. I'm not happy about any of this, right? I only found out about this five hours ago. I'm pretty unhappy about that because I didn't get a chance to fix it. One of the reasons he told me is because he didn't want me to talk him out of it. What I want to do is fix it. But I didn't get that opportunity. For the first time in 15 years, I didn't get that opportunity because it wasn't communicated to me. to me. Regardless of what anybody else up here thinks, I've been around the longest. I'm the old guy. Some people don't think I know what I'm doing, but I do. And I remember everything. And every one of you in this room know that I do everything I can do to protect our employees. This pisses me off. I don't like this. I want to find a solution. I want to work together to do it. That's my opinion. But I didn't get that chance this time. And Gene, you know me.
Oh, I know you.
You know I get shit done when I say I'm gonna do it. And I've never cursed up here before. This pisses me off. And they can use that anywhere they want in social media. But I didn't get that chance this time. And it bothers me. Hopefully, hopefully, and the reason I ask is, nobody better have made a motion to accept a resignation, because I know I'm not ready to. So I don't know if I answered your question.
My question, I have to go towards the Chairman. The fact of the matter is that you gotta start putting a real budget together. Really do. I mean, many, 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 many years ago, a town counselor, in lower breath, said if they only really realized how much it takes to run the fire department, 15, 20 years ago that was stated. Well, you do know what it is. And if the taxpayers have turned around and said, we want X amount of people, and if all of a sudden, they keep running into problems and we keep dropping back, we have to figure out why. And if it's figure out why because it's injuries, then maybe it's time to put a line item aside to be able to take care of those injuries, whether it's in any of the departments that we have in this town. There should be some type of account to be able to pull out, to be able to maintain. And at some point in time, we've gotta cross that bridge, because it's really getting, it's getting tiring, okay? That's all I gotta say.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Gentlemen, Deputy Fire Chief Philip Blunk, resident 3 King John Drive. I've lived in this town for 30 years. Teddy and I grew up together. I grew up with Chief Butler together. I graduated from the high schools here with Justin's brother. Chief Butler, this, we can talk about money till we're blue in the face, we can. But at the end of the day, we gotta look at people over money here. Chief Butler, I'm gonna tell you a story. And this has resonated with me, and this is why I feel so strongly that this is more than money, and this is what's doing right for this community with the right leader. Chief Butler was asked, and you all know this, because it was in the newspaper, and he was asked to go talk to the football team. He didn't offer that. The coach asked him. He went over there. He talked to the whole football team for an hour and a half, 14 to 17-year-old boys. He called 18-year-old boys. He called one out for sleeping. Now, you know what those boys did? Those boys left the room, and they went and told their friends how impactful his speech was. And those friends went and told their friends how impactful his speech was. And I know this, because parents of my children age, who have older kids, came to me and said, I heard the fire chief give a pretty good speech at the high school. If that doesn't explain to you the effects that this man has on this community, I don't know what does. And I'm telling you right now, leadership goes a long, long way. And what he's done for this town in the 40, how long has he lived in this community?
Forty.
Forty years?
Yeah.
Forty years. Went to the high school, elementary school, served our country for this town, came back, continued to work here for 19 years, and then took this job, bought a farm so it wouldn't get developed, for crying out loud, so we could continue to maintain the field that we want in this community. I don't know what else he has to give. I really don't. I don't. But all I'm saying is, this guy has bled this town through and through, to the point where he got 18, 17, 16, 15, and 14-year-old boys to go tell their friends not to screw around, not to drive drunk, to put their seat belts on, to treat women well, to be men, to raise their hand and say, I messed up when I messed up, to own their mistakes, to stand behind it, that they have two last names, their last name and the town of Lunandary, and the Lunandary football team. And if they make a mistake, it's not only gonna affect them, it's gonna affect the school and every person that works in there, whether they play on the football team or they play in the band. I don't know what else has to be said about this man. I really don't. But as a guy that's worked side by side with him for the last year and has known him for 30 years, I don't know what else you want in a leader. I really don't. Because that's the best you're gonna get. It's the best you're gonna get. That's all I got.
Bruce Hollowell, I'm a resident at 10 Phillips Brook Lane, Lunandary, Hampshire. I also serve as a Battalion Chief with the Lunandary Fire Department. I'm standing before you today, still, because of the man that just resigned from his post as Chief of Department. We're talking about a number of 13 members on duty, which is far below the national standard of fire protection for any community, especially one of this size, with the size of buildings and the target hazards that remain in this community. For those of you who sit on the council that don't know, and for people-
You're good.
And for people at home watching. On July 27th, two years ago-
Bruce, look at me. You're okay.
Myself and my crew from Engine 2, in the south end of town, responded to a major building fire in the town of Derry. We operated at what ultimately turned into a five-alarm fire. This is a sprinkled building, supposedly non-flammable, and engineered to be safe. Went to five alarms. In that building, on the fourth floor, myself and a probationary firefighter became lost and disorientated. I ultimately ran out of air on the fourth floor in suffocating smoke. The fire chief who just walked out of this room heard my calls on the radio, understood the inflection of my voice, and knew I was in trouble. He freelanced his way to the fourth floor of that building, found me, and ultimately led me out of the building. I was 30 seconds from cardiac arrest. I would've left behind a wife and four kids under the age of 10. That's the job we're talking about. That's the reality of not staffing. And we were staffed to what we considered to be a full-engine company. We had three. So when we're talking about 13, or 11, or 10, or nine, the question I have for both the council and the community is, even at 13, we're still well below where we should be. We were 30 seconds in this community away from a line-of-duty death. That's what we're talking about. And the man that just left here, he saved my life. He was issued one of the highest citations for his bravery that you can be issued in the fire service. So I ask, I beg, please, restore the ability for our leader to return to his post. Because I have a 10-year-old boy that wants nothing more than to be a firefighter in this community. And I want to leave him a department that he will be proud to work at. And that department needs to have Bo Butler at the top of it. Thank you.
I'm sure you're dreading this, but that's okay. Never short for words. Jim Butler, 5A, Danbury Court. I've been a resident of this town for over 37 years. My boys have gone through the school systems, they've gone through the athletic systems, and it turned out pretty damn well. The first thing I want to do is I want to thank the people that Bo is leading. I appreciate it. This means a lot to the family. I don't know whether or not I can convince Bo to come back. They haven't accepted his resignation. I don't know. And quite frankly, I apologize, John, because this afternoon, I myself found out about the details, which is disgraceful. And I will talk to you, Mr. Chairman, but the people who I'm talking about know what I'm talking about. John, I apologize for the way I acted.
It's okay.
Well, you gotta know when you're wrong. And I was wrong, John. It was emotional.
It's okay. We're friends. It's all right.
Now, let's get to the money. Don't tell me, don't tell me I was a counselor for 11 years. Don't tell me you don't have the money. I don't want to hear it. We have two positions in this town, very highly-paid positions in this town, the Assistant Engineer and the Planner. For two years, for two years, they haven't been filled. It had never happened in the private industry. We have open positions. This is a bottom-line budget. You know where you can get the money. Some of this is political, guys. Some of it rests on your shoulders. Because I'll tell you something. After tonight, there are gonna be people in this community that are gonna ask questions. Yes, Bo's my son. I've tried to talk him, talk to him, but Bo's Bo. He's gonna do what he wants to do. And I've never got in the way of this, ever. So I'm speaking from the heart, and I'm speaking to you guys. It's you. You're the chairman. This is a disgrace. To let this go on, it's a disgrace. For two years, we had a budget that was, that they went on overtime, which was Darren's budget, and then we had another budget. Did the town manager ever ask Bo what he needed to make it right? I'd like to know that answer. I'd like to know, how much money right now did we give the taxpayers back last year? Their finance director should know that. How much was it? Mr. Chairman, do you know it?
I don't know.
We gave, did we give money back, John?
I haven't, we were gonna have a budget review tonight, so I was gonna find out tonight.
That's great. I'd like to know how much money we gave back or put into the undesignated fund balance for last year, and I'd like to know how much money that was given back or put into the undesignated fund balance the previous year. Don't tell me you don't have money. You've got money. And this tells the story, right here. I don't have to say much more. And then I hear, there's a toxic environment? There's a toxic environment over at the fire department? Really? I won't mention who, but I'll tell you what. He knows. Does that look like a toxic environment over at the fire department? I don't think so. You haven't, I haven't seen this in 20 years. You've got contracts coming up. You've got all kinds of things coming up. They were behind Bo. And Bo's a leader. He's not gonna cower to just make someone feel good because they don't agree. This was a political sham. To a certain extent, this was a political sham, because Bo stood up for what he thought was true and what he thinks is right. And someone mentioned Lori Gandy? This is a Lori Gandy thing in a different set of clothes. That's what this is about. Build your file. He has never, go, I have to be careful of HR, I get it, but his record was clean. His record was clean. Do you gentlemen know what the town manager wanted to give him? You know. Do you know?
No, I don't know. I was involved-
Okay, I think you should find out. Do you know?
I do not, sir.
Do you know, John?
I found out at 4:30 today.
Really? And what, Sean's not here? Oh, by the way, Sean beat me, and he's doing a damn good job. Just so let you know. That's the way it is. I'm okay. It's good.
Well, let's hear it. What was it?
What was what?
What was he gonna get?
The only reason why I'm hesitating is because that has an HR issue attached to it.
Tom Butler, 5 Danbury Court. We're in a room full of people that know where there's smoke, there's fire. You got smoke right there, and you got fire right there. He should be fired, and he should be fired. That's all I got to say.
So, with that being said, yeah, I'll tell you what it was. I'll go out on the line, because I don't BS people. I saw a letter from my son, who's never had a problem. People have said he's done great things. He's got great reviews. I saw a letter from your town manager that said he was gonna get suspended for five days without pay. Now, who in their right, see, you're looking at saying, what the hell are you talking about? I suggest, as a counselor, you find out, Ted.
I would.
I suggest, as a counselor, you find out. Are you kidding me? Someone that has, if there's issues there, that's fine, I get it. But you gotta be kidding me. You have a guy that's been on this force for 20 years, has not a blemish on his record, and then the town manager sends him, and I haven't seen it all, that's up to Bo if he wants to show it, I guess, a five-day suspension with no pay. Are you kidding me? You're kidding me, right? And look it, guys. Half these counselors don't even know what happened. I'll call them out. I don't have a problem. They bleed just like I do, and just like you do. So guess what, guys? Get your cards in line. And I wish you the best of luck. But I'll tell you something. You have a management problem here. Look into it. And for you guys not to know what was going on with the department head, want to ask your question. Who approves of the department heads? Who approves the final approval on the department heads? Just need to know, guys, who does it? You guys don't know? Who does it? I want to hear someone tell me who does it.
You know how it is.
I know. Well, I want to hear it from you guys. I want to hear it from a counselor that doesn't know anything about this. I want to hear it from a council that doesn't know anything about it. And it's just, that's the fact. You don't. Who approves the heads?
We do.
You guys do. And you guys don't even know all the facts.
No.
Could there be some things? Yeah, there could be some things there. But you know what that is? And you know me, I don't like politics. I really don't. It stinks from the head down. And I'm not done with it. So you guys better come up with a solution. Because I'll tell you what, after the people of Lunandary watch this meeting and hear what, and look at all these people in the room, there's gonna be hell to pay, guys. And guess what? I know the game. Oh, let it pass. Two weeks, it'll be over with. We'll see. We'll see. And I've directed that to you, but the people know who I'm talking about. And I'm not done. And I'm proud of my son. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And someone else in this room should be ashamed of themselves, too. That's all I have to say.
Matt Lemire, resident 21 Chandler Drive here in town, also a TCO with the Lunandary Fire Department. I don't care- I don't care what anybody says, what any of you think what's going on over there, but the least truthful thing I've heard here tonight is that there's a toxic environment over there. I was just hired late June, early July, and every single one of these people back here has treated me like a family member from day one. And that doesn't just happen because there's a toxic environment. That happens because of the leadership at the top. Chief Butler, Chief LeBlanc, all the lieutenants, down to the new hires that started two weeks ago. Every single person at that department has treated me like a family member and would do anything for me. And as a resident of this town, I've had these guys respond to my house for my little guy that got hurt. The people in this town are going to suffer if you cut this staffing. It's, I'm saying this as a resident, it's absolutely ridiculous. And like Bo's dad just said, this council should be ashamed of itself. That is the most loving, this is the most loving place I have ever worked. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I have never worked for a place like the Londonderry Fire Department. You people need to realize that.
Allow me to speak again?
There are others that may wish to speak.
Not you, it's all you, bud.
Well, I haven't moved. I'm still in Nineteen-Horseshoe Lane. What I've heard over the past ten minutes or so, I had no idea. I had absolutely no idea. You're the man. Buck stops with you. Ted, you said you didn't know anything about it?
I had no idea.
And Ron, you said you didn't know anything about it? And John, you said you didn't know anything about it?
I'll be honest, Jim and I had a conversation. He told me about the letter. There's more information, as there always is.
Yeah.
And that's frankly when I found out about it. So I, you know, I did some checking, and what I can commit to you, Gene, because we've known each other a long time, is that, you know, again, I don't know how much longer I'm going to do this. I'm a little, you know, I got some things to think about. But I'm going to dig into this and figure out if I can come up with a solution that, you know, we can, that will work. I don't know, usually I need a little bit more time than six hours.
So, hey, I just found out at six forty-five that this was happening, so.
Yeah, I mean, I found out at one o'clock this afternoon. So, I mean, I just, I need a little time. And I'm going to do my best to try to dig into it. And that I can give you my commitment on.
So, Mr. Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, but the town charter says you're the man. You dictate the orders to him. He turns around, dictates the orders to Bo. And we, as taxpayers in this, pretty much dictate to you. So I'm asking you, did you know about this?
About what?
Did you know about this whole thing of what's going on? The fact that all of a sudden, he's potentially going to be suspended for five days with whatever's going on? I was led to believe this was just a financial thing. Apparently, it's not just a financial thing. If I have counselors that don't even know, and I don't know if you know or not, I'm guessing you probably do, these are games. Enough with the games. You've been hired. You brought your name out there, and people voted you in. You were hired to go in the position. And you were elected to go into the position you're in now as the head honcho. So, number one, did you know about a toxic work environment over there? Or you choose just not to answer the question?
I don't know what you want me to say. What are you looking for me?
Well, it's a yes or no. That's it. And if you don't want to answer it, okay. Anybody that's watching the TV or on YouTube or whatever, a couple days, a week, or whatever, I guess they know the answer. I don't get it. I really don't get it. When you got a police chief up here that says that they've got people that they love to go to work, that they have the headcount that they do, then you have the fire department that turns around and does exactly what they were asked to do to make sure they filled every spot they did. And they worked hard, and they did. They filled it. And now, all of a sudden, we're turning around, and we're saying this, we're saying that. These are games. So who wants to come work here? If they know they're going to turn around and potentially get on the chopping block? Or it's just the town politics? I would want to say, because I moved to this town back in nineteen seventy, that, oh, it's just a small-town politics. No, it's not. Because number one, we're not a small town anymore. And two, the politics are just getting worse and worse. And how do you want people to step up here and lead your departments? When they got promotions, they're going to turn around and step back. Then you're going to hire somebody in, like you did down in Massachusetts a couple of chiefs ago, and find out that was a big mistake. I just, I don't get it. I just, I don't get it. And boy, you know, I wasn't frustrated, but over the fast fifteen minutes of what I've heard, it just makes me sick.
I'm still at the same address, 8 O'Connell Drive, Danbushet.
And since we're doing...
Chad, I just want to apologize for, previously, I was a little upset because I love this community. And I just hope that the council will step up and do the right thing. These people came here, and I think it speaks volumes of the support they have for their chief. All right, as long as I've lived in this community, I've never seen, ever, seen a turnout like this for, whether it was a police chief that was in trouble or a fire chief that was in trouble. All right, I never seen that. Ted, you've lived here for a long time. You know it. Okay? And I sit there, and some of them have spoken, and I know there's a lot more that would like to speak, but they're in a vulnerable position. They work for the town. And if they say anything, sometimes it comes back to bite you in the butt. All right? I've learned that a long time ago when I worked for this community. You speak up, they're going to nail you. So I'm not afraid to speak up, anyway. But I just hope that, first of all, I want, I know I was very upset earlier. My wife sent me a text, and she goes, calm down a little bit. And I just want you guys to do right by this community. We have a great leader. All right? And to lose that leader and have him leave, that's wrong. You have to look at another, somewhere else. All right? This is not the first time this is going on in this community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't know if this is appropriate, but I'm here for a different issue.
It is public comment. Name and address, please.
It is, okay. Well, first of all, I'd like to say that as seniors in Londonderry, my husband and I have had so much help from the fire department here, the fire services, and the police, that we're just really grateful to them, and we're grateful to live in Londonderry. So, thank you. Okay, easy. Going from this to, I need a sign on my street. Are you ready for it? Okay.
So, full disclosure, we spoke this afternoon.
Yes.
And I asked you to come down here.
Yes.
I didn't know that this was going to happen, as you probably heard, because we spoke earlier in the day, and I had no idea that this was going to be here. So I want to apologize to you that I didn't recognize you and have you be able to get home earlier, because I...
That's okay. That's okay. I'm not sure it's appropriate for me to talk about this. I know emotions are very high.
It's absolutely appropriate. It's something you're concerned about, and you should bring it to our attention.
Okay. Okay, so, hello, my name is Linda Sharp. My family and I have lived at 12 King George Drive since the spring of nineteen eighty. Our property is on a dangerous curve, and our drive is blind. We don't feel safe or secure as we leave our driveway and enter the road. We hold our breath, no matter how careful we are when we go onto the road. We don't know who's going to be speeding, or who's going to be texting, or it's just, it's scary for us. So I'm here to request some type of signage to indicate to drivers that they should slow down and be alert. They need to be made aware that when they take that curve, they're going to be pretty quickly maybe hitting a car leaving a driveway or somebody taking a walk, neighbors walk their dogs, and the kids are on bikes. Even to the point of, you know, snow removal, or getting mail, or getting trash cans. It's down at the bottom of the driveway, and people come around that curve not knowing what they're going to see. There's so little time or room to make a correction, and we've had a lot of near misses. I've talked to a neighbor. The neighborhood's changed. We've been there forty-four years, so we've seen our kids grow up there. Now, there are a whole new bunch of kids right around that curve. One is learning, kindergarten, and learning how to ride a bicycle. And I talked to his mom today, and she's very concerned, too. I don't know if you're aware of King George Drive with the topography as like. So, of course, she supports some kind of signage as well. And I said, we're seniors. My husband also is visually impaired, so it's not good to have a curve like that if he's down the bottom and expect him to, you know, see it and get out of the way. So I'm asking for some kind of a sign or some way to slow things down. So the sign can be for a blind drive, for a blind person, for a handicapped person, slow children, caution curve, just anything at all so that the driver will know that that little portion of King George Drive needs extra concentration and extra caution. And we don't want any injuries. And I thank you for your attention and consideration, and even for listening to this on such an evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, if I can address this, we actually did some investig, I actually asked some people to do some investigation this afternoon. The police department let me know that they've been out there regularly patrolling and looking at this area for the safety issues. I also spoke with the Public Works Director and asked him if he would go out there and take a look and give his point of view. We also, all of us recognized that with the house being built in nineteen sixty-nine, it was before we actually had proper zoning. And that the site distance that would be required for their driveway today, the driveway wouldn't be built the way that it is today. In speaking with the Public Works Director, what he let me know is that he's going to take some, look for some signs that he may have about slowing down into a curve and see if there's something we can do to resolve this without going through the whole Traffic Safety Committee, and something that we can work on to bring more attention to it. And if it's okay with you, Mr. Town Manager, if you could please direct the Public Works Director to follow through on that, that would be, you know, that would be great. And maybe we could resolve something before the winter.
Thank you very much for your assistance on this.
Good evening.
Good evening. Jake Butler, 2 Danbury Court, Londonderry, New Hampshire. I think the chief asked us all to maintain a good composure, so I'm going to do just that. I hope each and every one of you learned a little bit about leadership tonight, because what you saw tonight is more leadership than any of you have ever shown. And that's all I'm going to say. All right? Get it? Learn a thing or two. I don't know what else to say. These guys think he's incredible? You guys don't have the privilege of being his little brother. Maybe I'm a little biased, but you guys, this was the single-handedly most influential leader in the town of Londonderry that this town will ever see. And here I am, thirty-two years old, still learning a lesson from him every day, because that's the kind of guy he is. Leaving these guys with real leadership. I suggest you show them some leadership, Mr. Franz.
Anyone else? Seeing that, I'm going to close public comment. All right, counsel. Let me call a couple-minute recess. Do we have a motion? Do we need a motion to go on recess?
No.
No. All right, folks, moving along in the agenda. Appointments, reappointments. So there's an appointment for Mr. John Wilson to the CART Advisory Board. There's a letter in the agenda, in our packet, addressed to Mr. Town Manager regarding the open position on the CART Advisory Board. And I'll just read the letter into the record. John Wilson, 3 Tranquil Drive. Is Mr. Wilson present? Read it into the record. 3 Tranquil Drive, Londonderry, New Hampshire. Mike Malaguti, Town Manager. As recent, I was recently made aware of the open Londonderry position on the CART Advisory Board. I would like to represent Londonderry on the Advisory Board. I'm a member of the Senior Resource Committee. The committee is reviewing what transportation services we have and what, if any, additional services may be needed. I'm a member of the Region Eight Coordinating Council, and I have been an advocate for senior transportation for over five years. Regards, John Wilson. Is this the only application for this position?
Yes.
Counsel, what do you want to do?
Can you tell me more about this CART Advisory Board?
Position?
Yes, CART is the regional transportation option for seniors and folks who are not seniors alike. The CART Board was formerly occupied by Elona Arnt, the Senior Affairs Director. Lisa Drabek held a seat on it at one point in time. I have tried twice to get in touch with CART to get them to give us more information about the various vacancies that exist. I have been unsuccessful in doing that. But Mr. Wilson is very persistent, and I trust that if the council appoints him to this position, not only will he be well-qualified for and bring a lot to it, but he will get all of those answers. And I just think it makes a lot of sense to send him to this board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to appoint John Wilson to the board. Hopefully, he will be a better advisor to the board and to us going forward.
All right, so I have a motion from Ted. Do I have a second? A second from Ron. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Does this need to be sworn in, Mr. Town Manager?
No, it's not a town board, so he doesn't need to be sworn in.
Thank you. All right, new business. Fiscal year 2024 update. Mr. Finance Director, sir, good evening.
How is everybody?
Doing all right. How are you, sir?
I'm getting by one day at a time.
There we go. That's all we can do.
So, last year, we came in under budget, mainly due to the freeze aspect that we implemented. In terms of revenues, we came in significantly over budget for revenues. If you remember, there was discussions over interest rate cuts, and those never panned out last year. You've already seen them this year, so the budgeting number for interest revenue will be lower.
Will be what? I'm sorry.
It'll likely be lower.
Lower?
Lower, yes. Actually, last year, I think I planned for the budget for the rate cuts, and it didn't come. So, it'll be about the same around there for this coming year. But if you look, motor vehicles trended high, as well as the interest on earnings from investments.
What would be the driving factor on that, motor vehicles? Are they being valued at a higher rate from the state and the town?
It's a mixture of that, as well as the rental.
Up by the airport?
Yeah, the rental up by the airport, as well as, as you said, newer vehicles cost more. The motor vehicle registration is based on the market retail price of the vehicle.
And the location where they're parked in Londonderry?
For the rentals, yes. But in general, so for me and you, our cars, you buy a new car, it's going to be more to register it than it would have been five years ago if you bought a new car, because it costs more to purchase it.
So, I mean, maybe that's the question for our clerks department. Are we having a lot more new cars being registered in town compared to not? And/or the other side of that equation, are the rates that the state is charging to registered vehicles going up?
So, I think the rates are based on a formula of the market retail, the market sale, market retail price, MSRP.
Right, right.
Yep.
Interesting.
Anything else you want to highlight?
It's up to you guys and get into depth of this as much as you would like.
Counsel, continue to questions.
And for those watching at home, this is available on the town website as well.
So, Justin, walk me through total revenue.
All righty.
So, we have the original adjusted revenue this period, revenue year-to-date, revenue due. It's in parentheses. It's still outstanding. Is that correct?
If it's in parentheses, it's over what we budgeted. So, the original budget is essentially what we proposed to the taxpayers when they go to the ballot. We tend to estimate a little bit lower there. So, should something happen, it's not a, you're not getting a larger bill from what you voted in. The adjusted budget is what we set with the MS 434 that takes a look in September at what the revenues are trending at, and then we adjust the budget based on what it should be. That's where essentially you'll see the difference for interest revenue, or the state provides us with the meals and rooms number, and that will be adjusted based on that.
Now, your revenue this period, what is that period?
That would be the month of June.
The month of June alone?
Yes.
And the revenue year-to-date was from the June prior to June of 24?
From July through June.
Right, last July to this past June. Thank you.
And if you look, land use change tax came in considerably higher as well.
And I noticed we have quite a revenue from the fire department. We have $293,000 of revenue coming in from the fire department.
So, that's over what was budgeted?
Yes, of course. I noticed that. And then we also have the other end on expenses. They basically equal out on the fire department. But we actually made $1,000 more. No, more than $1,000. We made about 80 grand more than what the fire department expended.
So, that would not be accurate?
Why? Because you're showing an expense line over here on one side, and you have a revenue side.
So, if you look at the expenditures for the fire department, it was $8.3 million. The revenues for the fire department were only 1.1.
I understand that, but I'm seeing an over-budget of 218.
Correct.
But yet, we have an over-revenue of 293.
Correct.
Governmental accounting doesn't allow you to offset one against the other.
Okay, yeah. Sorry, I didn't realize that's where you were going with that. So, essentially, once you are over, it doesn't--
But we are a general fund budget, right?
Can he answer the question, please?
It is a general fund budget. That 293 doesn't get, you don't get to determine where that goes elsewhere. That 293 lapses to the fund balance for the taxpayers that decide later. The budget of 219 is what the taxpayers appropriated for that department in the operating budget. And if you look, it is $218,000 over, even though there was a freeze in place for six months. That impacted all the other departments as well. Back in January of '24, they were looking at about being $600,000 over budget.
And yet, in the end, we still had $563,000?
Correct, which I would like to attribute to the freeze and the other departments not being able to provide the services that they normally would be able to, and staff at the levels that they would be able to. If you look, a large portion of that is the police department, who implemented a significant freeze.
Yeah, a C of 155 we saved from their budget. Yep.
Who enacted that freeze?
I did.
It was not done lightly.
I'm sure it wasn't. But it seems like it was necessary.
I certainly believe so.
If they were to continue the trend they were at, you would have been looking at an additional $340,000 of expenses. And what you have to keep in mind, while that still--
How much?
$340,000 of expenses.
Thank you.
While that still puts us in the positive, that the numbers reflected here show the other departments in a freeze. So, you can't really just look at it in that aspect, because the other departments stopped spending as well.
So, if I can, it was across the board?
Yes.
Now, did that freeze also affect the insurance line, that we had a savings of $227,000?
It did not in that aspect. The only way it would have is individuals that open positions that we didn't hire because of the freeze.
So, that's where that expense line ended went down?
Between that, as well as, I believe, the GMR was higher than the actual rate that came in.
Okay.
Which this year is actually being adjusted, and the, there is not going to be a GMR this year. It is what it is when they set it for us in the upcoming weeks.
As one example of the effect of the freeze on overall town delivery of services, the police department had to place on hold an order of Glock pistols during this budget freeze. And the police department diligently implemented my directives in that regard.
Thank you. I have no further, no further questions. First, the counsel, do you?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Finance Director. Ordinance 2024-12 relative to adopting the Londonderry short-term rental ordinance. This is a first reading. Mr. Town Manager, I think, just one thing in Section 3, do we have to establish a dollar amount in regards to the application fee?
You may establish a dollar amount. You may establish no dollar amount. It's really a flag that's a decision for you to make, but it can be zero, or it can be, you know, whatever, however high you want to go. I suggest that the benefit of this is merely a registration requirement. It's certainly not going to be a revenue generator of any significance.
What's the labor regarding registration?
Very minimal.
Can we set something up online, kind of like Microsoft Form, I don't know, Google Sheets or Microsoft Form, where someone can input anything?
I'm certain. Well, let me put it this way. I'm not certain that I can make that technological change, but my office can.
Do you think, zero, counsel, what do you think is, being out there is limited--
Yeah. I think a very nominal fee makes sense.
What is nominal?
I mean, maybe $10. Like, something just--
That's reasonable.
Something just that's reasonable, but accounts for any time that it may take to be done.
I guess I was thinking higher than 25 to 50.
See, you want people to register, though. So, if you make it like $10, they're like, "Here's $10. It's not a big deal." Make it $50, they might just say, "I'm not going to register. I'm going to take my chances."
And then--
So, I think a nominal fee, I mean, is at least something to get the ball rolling.
What do we normally charge for other permits?
Building permits differ based on the value of the improvement, so they can be quite significant for a larger, a larger project.
That's different, because they're spending a lot of labor to go out and inspect.
We have other permits, such as assembly permits, that I believe are issued without charge. So, it really runs the gamut.
And I think even to have a business permit in the state of New Hampshire, I believe it's at least $50 for that.
Last I checked, $50 sounds right. I mean, it's been a number of years since I represented somebody forming a business, but I think that that was in the ballpark back when I was doing it.
I mean, I think you're owning and running a business in town. And if you can't make $50 from one, I mean, how many rentals are you going to have across a whole--
I just think $50 is going to make somebody not want to do it. And think of dog registrations. Dog registration's $7, you know, to sign up. I don't think $10--
It's not anything the council needs to decide tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it is a first reading, so, and the--
Do we have to put something there to waive the first reading?
No.
How does the council want to proceed? Do you want to waive the first reading? Or do you want to put something in there?
We can waive the first reading with the other five members. I'm sorry, other two--
That's what I was going to suggest.
Yeah. I'm fine with waiving the first. I'll make a motion to waive the first reading.
All right, so I have a motion from Ron.
I'll second that.
A second from Ted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair's votes in the affirmative. First reading is waived. All right, extension of appointments of the demolition review committee by 60 days. Chair Son Hildenin.
Thank you very much. So, the, when you initially appointed the members of the demolition review committee, you appointed them for 90 days. That 90 days is up on October 14th. I'm requesting that you extend their appointments by 60 days so that we have time to work with the building department to review the policy and the ordinance that creates the demolition review committee and determines its procedure. We've had one case come before in that time, so we were actually, was really fortunate that we got to see how it runs. And so, we'd like to do a little bit of research, see if it needs to be amended, and come back to you with suggestions by the end of the year. However, for now, I think it behooves us to leave the current composure of the committee in place in case we have another situation that comes up like the last one.
So, the current members?
Yeah. Could I make a suggestion? We extend it to 1221 until 1231?
Even better.
I'm just saying, just make it simple, make it end of the year.
So, is that in form of motion?
I'll make a formal motion to extend it to 123124.
Any second?
I'll second that. That makes a lot more sense.
Thank you. Second from Ted. For discussion, or are we good?
I'm good with that. Are you good with that? Are you, is that?
That sounds perfect. That's even better.
Okay.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, chair votes in the affirmative. Thank you. Public hearing, I'll accept the motion to open the public hearing.
So moved?
I have a motion from Ron.
Second.
Second from Ted. Resolution 2024-24 relative to amending the Londonderry storm water regulations. Mr. Town Manager, sir?
Very simple, Mr. Chair. The council adopted amendments to the stormwater regulations earlier this year. Those require 12-foot access drives to detention basins and other drainage structures. The amendment merely makes it clear that if there's an alternate means of access that already exists through the design, such as a roadway going right by one of those detention basins, this is something that the planning board looked at recently, we're really trying to make sure that there is functional access. How it's provided is something that the applicant can work out with the Department of Engineering. But we think it makes a little bit more sense, gives a little bit more flexibility, but still ensures the same exact access.
All right, thank you. Counsel, what say you? Or actually, we'll open it up to the public. Is there any public comment regarding Resolution 2024-24 relative to amending the Londonderry storm water regulations?
I think we lost the one person who might have said something at one point.
Seeing none, back to the council.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-24 relative to amending the Londonderry storm water regulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Resolution 2024-24 is adopted. Ordinance 2024-10 amendment to the municipal code, Title II, Traffic Safety Code, Chapter 4, I'm sorry, Chapter 9. Yes. No? Yes. Speed limits and trucking regulations, Mr. Town Manager.
This implements the prior action of the council, as discussed at the last meeting, which makes Gilchrist Road a 30 mile an hour speed limit. Does the same for West Road, per the consensus of the council from last hearing. The other operative change is it makes Griffin Road a no-through-trucking road.
And as well, West Road, correct.
Did we make West Road a, I don't believe so.
No.
The problem with the gentleman who was speaking last time is that the through-trucking ordinance, a through-trucking ordinance on West Road would not prevent a business from starting up there and coming and going. So, I think that that's more of a, you know, as we discussed last time around, a good neighbor situation, perhaps a police enforcement situation. I know that the police department has been involved there in trying to mediate that in the past, but a through-trucking ordinance would not prevent that business from operating.
Should we strike West Road from this ordinance, or?
West Road is, the speed limit is coming down.
Okay.
Yes.
So, Gilchrist, so Gilchrist and West Road, low reduction of speed, and then Griffin is the--
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for that, thanks for that clarification.
You just got a couple of comments. So, I heard from three residents about this. They all want it. They're all in favor of it. Their issue is, they think that, or their opinion is that people that drive 35 right now are going to drive 30, but people that drive 60 and 50 are going to still do the same. So, their concern is that we adopt this and nothing's going to change. So, they just want, wanted, I guess, if there's any way that we can enforce it better, is their concern. Because they--
Do they have a suggestion on anything else?
They didn't. They're all very, very polite. They don't like bothering the police department. They don't want to call what--
No, I understand. I'm just asking, did they like have another creative idea?
They did not. They were just, they're very happy with lowering the speed limit, and they think that people that do 35 now will do 30, but people that drive 50 and 60 are going to continue to do that. So, they're very appreciative of what we're doing, but they just wanted me to know that they don't think it's going to change.
So, I guess, like 20 years, was it 20 years ago we lowered High Range Road to, from 35 to 30?
Hmm.
15 or 20 years or something?
It was 15.
When we did that, they're absolutely right. But as the chief is, so I'll share with you what the chief, the multiple chiefs have explained, is I said, when you do that, the rate of accident also drops with it, and it changes the whole dynamic. So, lowering the speed limit and doing that, yes, we're always going to have an enforcement issue, but it's also going to change the behavior of the drivers overall, because the one doing 50 may do 45. The one doing 45 may do 40. And that's what they've explained to me over the years. I don't know if that's helpful.
It is.
But, and they said, what it does is it changes the dynamic of the traffic patterns. Am I going down the right path here?
And chief, they're all happy with you. They don't want to burden you with more. But they are all, the three residents I spoke with, they're all very happy with the police department. So, it's not that they're not happy with what you're doing. They just fear that people know when you're there and when you're not there.
Of course, yeah. Our cars are a dead giveaway, sir. You see them a mile away. To the point about traffic and the reducing of speed, historically, it showed that every time you reduce traffic speeds, you reduce accident severities, too. As you guys recall, some two years ago, maybe, we did the Litchfield Road one after weeks and weeks of complaints, or months and so on. So, we did that. Those complaints have been minimal, too. Everywhere in town, we've tried this. It works. Now, will it always work to the point that your friends or neighbors or whomever is sharing? And the answer is no. But as John pointed out, historically, we're all ingrained, as people who are probably sick of hearing me say this. If you drive 10 over, you're fine, right? They say cops won't stop unless you're doing 15 over, and then you'll get a ticket. So, we've all been ingrained, every one of-- So we've all been ingrained, every one of us at a young age, to just stay within reason of the speed limit. But that comes at a cost, and that cost is, for example, if you live in a neighborhood, it's 35, and people drive 45. 45 is too fast in a neighborhood. So this was pitched several years back. I don't remember exactly how long, but it was brought before the council, and I think John would probably remember. My guess was 16 or 17 that it was asked to be a town-wide reduction to 30. And I'll stand here today, I'll say it tomorrow, I'll say it wherever. I think it's about time we look at that, because we can't stop people from commuting through our town. It's not going to happen. We can't put Ways App out there and just have the Londonderry residents. We can't stop how much growth happens here. But what we can do, we can control one thing. We can control the speed limits that we post in our town, so we can enforce it. And, you know, that 10 miles an hour over that people do, if you reduce it to a 30, I mean, it does save, it's a big deal.
Excellent.
I think Stop Sign Tony has something to say.
Want me to shut this off?
Name and record, name and address.
Tony D. Francesco, One Cheshire Court.
That's a quick question, Chief. Just a quick question?
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Chief, just a quick question. So should the residents call you? Because they don't want to keep bothering you.
So here's?
They just want to know, like, should they call you when issues happen?
Yeah, so here's, it's a great question. Should they call? They can call us anytime, just don't call 911. So they can call us anytime. So we have watch commanders on 24/7, we have supervisors on all the time, and we have dispatch all the time. We can take the information, and we can put it through the operations channels. If people don't call, then we assume everything is good. So by all means, call us with an area of town. We'll put it on the list of directed patrols, and we'll do what we always do. We provide the best service that we can, given resources and time where, you know, they're not responding to other calls, but happy to take calls.
Dispatch answers the non-emergency 1118 number, right?
Correct, yep.
So if they don't call 911, they call 4321118. It's just as, they're going to go right into dispatch.
Yep.
Thank you.
Which is the same dispatch for 911.
It's quicker to call us.
Stop sign Tony, good evening, sir. Do you have any?
Cut the mic.
Tony D. Francesco, One Cheshire Court. And contrary to popular belief, I'm not here tonight to talk about stop signs.
It would be okay if you could.
You may proceed.
But I will, but I will say, for the speed ordinance, yes. But I will tell you that, that we're fooling ourselves if we think that lowering the speed limit is the only thing that you have to do. One person's opinion, having been in the town for over 46 years now, and having the same exact signage, speed limits, whatever you want to talk about, we're past that. And so lowering the speed limit, in one person's opinion, is step one.
Agreed.
Okay, traffic safety is going to help us get through some other things that I'm not going to talk about tonight, that may or may not be needed. So I just, I, you know, I want you to know, you know, Mr. Dunn's a little bit concerned about this, but understand, this is just step one. We've got a lot of cow paths that people are going 65, 70 miles an hour on. And it's not safe. So we're going to get there, but you've got to go through some steps. And some people are more active at this than others. So thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, back to the council. What do you want to do?
I'll make a motion to accept the ordinance 2024-10.
All right, so I have a motion from Ron. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second from Ted. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Ordinance 2024-10 passes, thank you. All right, with that, I'll accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second?
I have a motion from Ted, second from Ron. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. We are out of public hearing. Old business. Approval minutes, I'll accept the motion.
So moved. Second?
To approve minutes from separate 23rd, 2024. I have a motion from Ted, second from Ron. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any amendments? Or as written?
Good, fine.
Any opposed? Chair votes in the affirmative. Minutes are approved. Liaison reports.
I'll give one moment of time to the groundbreaking for the Baldwin that I attended this past Thursday. Ron was also there as well. It was a great groundbreaking, I thought, and wonderful to see the community members there, you know, engaged and lively, and also wanting to be involved in the town. And very, you know, I think we could have quite a, potentially a surge of people for volunteer positions soon, for new members who live there. And I was able to attend a tour of the facility as well. I've got to say, that facility is grade A. It really is. And for members there who've moved from 23 different states to come to Londonderry is pretty impressive, and some of them were on the waitlist for over four years. You know, I was able to see their wonderful library, where they have many members who are actually resident authors and have books there, resident artists who have an art gallery within the facility. It's really, really impressive. And as well to see their auditorium space that they have within there. You know, I wanted to bring it up at, maybe at another meeting when we have all five members, but I thought it would be an interesting idea to have either a town council meeting there one day as a separate meeting location, or to have a Q and A with some of the members and the public who live there, who are new to the community and might not know our form of government, and wanting to know, how do we do everything here in town? Or what do I do? Or this is, you know, how we do things compared to their town or city that they moved from. You know, we have a lot of knowledgeable and experienced people. I heard there's a couple former judges there. There's high-ranking military officials who are retired and live there. And, you know, I think having their expertise to our town would be quite a good service for us at some point. So I think trying to engage with them and find out how can they help us would be really helpful, I think, at some point.
Oh, I got invited to dinner, the food was pretty good.
Oh.
I got a private tour from a resident, but I got invited to dinner. And I'm serious, the food was good, they got a great staff, the people were really nice, and it was, they feed a couple hundred people a day, it was, it was very nice.
It's pretty impressive.
And they do have a liquor license and a bar, just in case you wanted to know.
I did see that, that was quite nice.
Just in case you wanted to make that a regular stopping place.
All right, anything else for liaison reports? Mr. Town Manager report?
No Town Manager report this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. TM. All right, folks, our next meeting is October 21st here in the Moose Hill Council Chambers at 7:00 PM, followed by November 4th, same time, same location.
Motion to adjourn, second?